Meeting to order, it's the meeting of the zoning board of appeals town of Cohasset, Tuesday, October 6, 2020, 7:35 PM. And sitting as the board of appeals are Dave McMorris, myself, Woody Chitik Chair, Peter Gertica Vice Chair, Charlie Higginson, Matt Watkins, we're waiting for Lee Darst and Town Council. Cindy Yamara is also here. And Jen Oram, Jennifer Oram, our clerk, is conducting, is conducting the technical side of the meeting, so. And I don't know who Marge Rossi is.
I don't either, I'm gonna, I'm gonna demote them when I have a second, it's just not been the smoothest start. Would you like me to just go over the protocols?
Yeah, please, if you would.
Okay, and then I will have to shut off and promote Lee. So, basically what we're gonna do, we always do, we're gonna start the hearing, the process will be to, we've got two continued hearings and actually three continued hearings and one new hearing and then one continuation request. The chairman will reopen the hearing and then ask if there's any new information, if there is, it'll be discussed, and if then it will either continue or close. And, and then if there are any audience questions, we'll request, put it through the Q and A, putting your address, name and address, and we will try to speak to you and promote you so you can actually speak one at a time. And that's it. So, the first one is...
We have some business, a couple, a little bit of business, meeting dates?
Yes, meeting dates. So, November 10th is, will, is still gonna work, and it will work for both 488, I did receive continuations for both.
Oh, good, okay. And December 1st, looking forward by almost two months, does anybody know of a, of a near certain conflict, or can we pencil that in? Yeah, Charlie?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, thought you were... Anybody else, or can we at least use that as a tentative date?
I'm fine.
Yeah, I am too. Not going too many places these days, so this is just fine. What about 488, Jerus, some possible change of meeting day?
That was in the event that we, if we for some reason didn't get our continuation letters, we would, would have considered to rescind the vote, and then set a new date so that we before the 100 days on two of them. So, I had counted up the dates and realized that if we didn't get the continuation letters, that we would be over the 100 days by November 10th. But we received continuation letters and they're filed with the clerk, so we're all set.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we open our first continued hearing, it's an appeal.
Do we know what, does Lee, is Lee just having technical difficulties, or is she...
Yes, I'm gonna take care of it now, but I just needed to, I just needed to go over the beginning, she's just having, she's using a different, her two other emails aren't working, I have a new email, so I'm just gonna take care of that while, I just promoted Attorney Sullivan, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Ready to go. I did.
Well, I'll open the hearing, at any rate, continued hearing, this is pertaining to 35 Oak Street. It's an appeal of the building inspector's denial to issue a building permit for a single family home. And since our last hearing, we have received a letter dated September 27th from a number of neighbors in that area, I didn't count them up, but it looks to be probably a good 15, objecting to, or actually agreeing with the building inspector to deny a building permit, and I'm sure there are people here who would like to speak to that letter. And we also received, actually yesterday, Jen, did we not, both Matt Watkins came up with a case, but you had also simultaneously come up with an appeals court case.
That's correct, it was submitted by a resident in the packet, and so we reviewed it and the building commissioner read it, and so we sent it to council, and we just thought it might have some relevance.
Right, and, and, and in that regard, I did speak to Attorney Walter Sullivan today and suggested that he kind of lead off the, the appeal hearing tonight, speaking to this appeals court case of Sears versus the town of Marshfield, and why presumably it is not relevant to the, to tonight's hearing, and we can take it from there.
All right, well, he was, he was here. We see these... Town Council, I apologize for the... I don't know where he was there, and I promoted him, and now he's not there, so if you hold one moment...
Yeah, sure.
I will contact him. Adam Brodsky. Okay, I've got Lee, so let me promote Lee. All right, so just give me one moment, and I'll see if I can find...
There's Lee.
There's Lee. All right.
Technology. I think when Attorney Sullivan is done and we've asked questions, obviously we can open it up to the public, but also the authors of that September 27th letter objecting to, I guess, procedure as well as some content of the board should be summarized by one of the authors of that, Ann, and/or Patrick McCusker of 41 Oak Street. But I'd like to maybe go, go on sequence here, but...
And Woody, at this time, I'm gonna recuse myself and shut my video off.
Okay. Well, if you shut your, all right.
Done.
It's done, regardless, I was gonna suggest just shut the audio off, but I don't know. She's out of the room.
Hello, okay, so I think there's a little bit of Zoom issues what's going on, so he, he's going to call in right now, Attorney Sullivan's gonna call in, we'll have his voice, and then you do have, so Lee has recused herself?
Yes, Lee has just recused herself.
Okay, so he's calling in right now, and then, temporarily, all right. Some sort of button happened, and I removed Walter from the meeting. All right, so, when you're ready to tell me, okay, I think here he is, so, a lot of talk, this should be Attorney Sullivan, Walter Sullivan.
Okay.
Sullivan?
Louder.
Walter Sullivan.
It's good, not as loud as it could be, but good.
I will do my best to speak up.
Okay. So Walter Sullivan, you are the attorney representing?
I am, yes, so I represent the applicant, so this is the third hearing at which we've been present, we were previously before the board on September 8. The issue, as the board well knows, is that my clients own two lots on Oak Street, and they have sought to have Lot 99 declared buildable by virtue of the derelict fee statute. In part, we rely upon a case this board decided back in 2017, right across the street, as precedent for utilizing the derelict fee statute. I understand from some recent letters from the butters that reference has been made to a town of Marshfield case. I actually cited that case in my September 1 letter to the zoning board of appeals, it was my recollection, my recollection that we had discussed it, and I think it is distinguishable on a couple of fronts from the present situation. The Marshfield zoning bylaw statute, section 300.8.3, single lot exception, deals with a similar but different interpret, grandfather protection from zoning, where it protects a 5,000 square foot lot for buildability, so almost 50% of what Cohasset has here. In the Sears case, the Marshfield case, Sears owned two lots on Hyde Way that were across the street from one another, and he sought to utilize the derelict fee statute for those lots to make them both buildable. I think a strict interpretation by the zoning board, given the 5,000 square foot, is understandable, and in the decision from the appeals court, upholding the zoning board of appeals decision that they could not use that land, it indicates essentially that they defer in situations like this to the zoning board of appeals in the interpretation of their own zoning bylaw. That's, that's pretty customary and jurisprudent. Here, where Cohasset under, I'm sorry, I said the Marshfield zoning bylaw is section 9.03, I was looking at the Cohasset bylaw. The Cohasset bylaw, of course, is 300.8.3B, and under, under that statute, a minimum that at the time in 1955 was 9,000 square feet, so that's significantly larger. And there's precedent here, as I indicated, just across the street on Oak Street, for allowing that inclusion into the calculation of the aggregate square footage. The derelict fee statute by its very name talks about fee ownership, not use, but ownership. And so it's our position that the extra 1,200 square feet, which our client is entitled to under the derelict fee statute, makes this a buildable lot. But I would suggest that the holding in the appeals court in the Sears Marshfield case is pretty clear in that it doesn't say that that's the, that's the law of the land, that you can't use the derelict fee statute. What it does say is that we defer to the Marshfield zoning bylaw in determining their own zoning bylaw. In fact, the language says that it does not require, that 183 section 58, the derelict fee statute, does not require the town to include the fee interest. But I would suggest that the court clearly was saying it's up to each town to interpret its own bylaw. And here, where there's 9,000 square feet as opposed to 5,000, and there's precedent, I think that's consistent policy, it makes sense to not punish the, the, the lot owners who have grandfather protected lots. So, that's our position, I know that that issue came up in some recent correspondence, I think we did actually talk about it, I know I wrote about it back in September when we were before the board before, and I think that that's the appropriate determination. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay, who would like to ask first? Dave, you were kind of the lead on this one. You're muted, David.
That might be best. I'm not sure, I don't, I don't see the difference in the 5,000 and 9,000 square foot lots under the different bylaws. The issue isn't the size of lot, the issue is whether or not you can count the area in the derelict fee to, to increase the size of the, of the lot, to, you know, get to where you want to get with the numbers. I didn't read that much wiggle room in the Sears case, and I know that we made, you know, a pretty clear decision two years ago, but I do acknowledge that the appeals court has much more presidential value than our decisions have. So, I'm, I'm gonna look through the Sears case again, but it, it does seem to me to speak to this case pretty clearly.
You wanna just kind of finish that thought off and how it does speak?
So, I guess, I guess my question is, is it your position that because the case says that the derelict fee statute doesn't require that we count that amount of the land, that we should therefore do so?
I, I, I think it's the clear language of the decision, it, I'm quoting it now, again, from my letter, it says, 183 section 58 does not require the town to include the fee interest covered by the statute when calculating lot area required by the zoning bylaw. I, I, you know, I think they could, they would have said it more clearly and said it prohibits it, they're not saying that. Further in the deci, in the decision, they say we leave it to the sound discretion of the local zoning, zoning board to determine its own local bylaws, and I think this board has done that in 2017. And I would suggest that, you know, it's equitable to suggest, to allow, you know, property owners to rely upon that determination, and that's, that's essentially what we're saying for purposes of my client. And I think there is a distinction, I think 5,000 square feet is a lot less than 9,000, and you can see where they'd be more strict about it. Although not part of the holding, you know, the appellate briefs are online, and I've read all three of them, and, you know, this is a situation where Sears owned lots across the street from one another on Hyde Way, and I think that played into it too, and there was, there was a lot of dicta about people being concerned whether someone could build into it. So I think that this was a narrow decision, and I think it's limited to the Marshfield zoning bylaw, and I think the 5,000 square feet is significant.
I'll just jump in and then turn it maybe over to Matt, but how would you interpret the, I'm going from the fourth, from the last paragraph in the summary that we got on the, on the appeals court, where the appeals court said, "The statute designed to deal with enforcement of property rights and the problem of unowned lots has never applied, nor did the legislature intended to apply to add lot area for zoning purposes."
Yeah, and I, I, I saw that, I think I have a difference, you know, I have the actual case, I think, but I, I obviously see that narrow interpretation, but I don't think it's the holding of the case. You know, what I said at the beginning is, the, the statute is called the derelict fee statute, not the derelict use statute. You know, they go on in, in the Sears case to talk about you could be surrounded by three ways and just have a narrow strip of land. Well, that, that's not the case here, and, and as I say, I can't tell just from reading the decision or the briefs, but I think it's a notable distinction, Mr. Chair, that these were two lots across the street from one another on Hyde Way as opposed to side by side. And I know that's not in the decision, but that is in the briefs, it's dealt with by town council and by the appellant's counsel. So I think these decisions sort of are fact specific, and I think each bylaw is a little bit different for each town.
Matt? No, I think Woody, what you just cited was what I had here in my notes to, to really bring up, just that the statute, according to what was read, was designed to deal more with the enforcement of property rights, not to add lot area for zoning purposes. So I, you know, appreciate Attorney Sullivan's interpretation of it, and giving us what, how he interprets it, but that really was my main point as well, is just that, what you cited.
Woody?
Dave?
I'm, I'm looking at the case, and basically plaintiff, the landowner, argued that the ZBA should allow him to include the square footage of the fee interest in the derelict fee area, and that would get him to 5,700 square feet. The court said, "We cannot accept that construction of the derelict fee statute. It's inconsistent with the text of the statute. Plainly, the fee interest which the derelict fee entitles a grantee does not include the right to build. Therefore, it makes little sense to read it as a grant of additional lot area for the purposes of meeting minimum lot size requirements in zoning laws." And then they go on to say that it doesn't square with the purpose of the statute. It's designed, the statute is designed to deal with the enforcement of property rights and the problem of unowned lots, and has never applied, nor did the legislature intended to apply to add lot area for zoning purposes. And then the third one kind of talks about what the problem was there with the two lots in the middle of the street. But that seems to me to be pretty clear language from the appeals court about how they consider lot area that's in the, that's included for the derelict fee statute, but not for the lot area for zoning purposes. And I just, I'm not seeing the...
Are you muted, or did you go out, Dave?
I think I'm done.
Okay, I think we might have missed your last sentence or two.
Oh, I'm sorry. It said the statute, the derelict fee statute has never applied, and it didn't, legislature did not intend it to apply to add lot area for zoning purposes. And I, I said, I, I don't, I'm having a harder time seeing any ambiguity in that. And I know that the holding says that the statute does not require a town to include the fee interest covered by that statute, and the board acted reasonably, but I don't see, in the, in the language of that, of that decision, I'm, I'm not seeing ambiguity. Perhaps you can clarify that for me?
Well, you know, I, I look to the holding of the case, and, and I read it as not requiring it, and I think that each town has a separate statute. I acknowledge what I think is, is the summary of the statute and their interpretation of it, their dicta, but I think their holding is limited to, they don't find that the Marshfield ZBA, in interpreting their zoning bylaw, was an error not to include it. I think 2017 Cohasset decided, under their own bylaw, which allowed for, which required more square footage, that they would include it, and I think there's good policy reasons for that, where it's almost, you know, 60% more land or 80% more land. So, you know, that, that's how I read it, I think this case is limited in that regard. I, I think they could have said very clearly that the derelict fee statute is prohibited under anybody's zoning bylaw from adding to the aggregate, but I don't think they did. I would argue that just as easily they wouldn't have overturned the Marshfield zoning, zoning board had it included that into the, into the, the, the square footage aggregate.
Would other board members like to take a bite at the apple?
I, I would rather wait and deliberate this, and I think we probably have other people who want to comment on it, you know, so...
Okay, so Peter would like to defer until deliberation. Charlie?
I think David's arguments are very accurate, I don't see that the area, 5,000, 9,000 makes, changes the situation, and I don't see what the lots across the street changed the situation.
Matt?
I don't have anything more.
Okay, at this point, maybe we should hear from, Jenna, you still, you're still there?
I am, we have...
Who would like to speak to this particular issue as opposed to the more general one in the September 27th letter?
Well, Ann McCusker, who...
Wrote that letter.
Wrote that letter, she has raised her hand, so would you be okay, I'm gonna promote her, I'm gonna allow her to talk, I don't have to promote her to be on screen, but she can talk, and you can ask, and she had a couple questions.
Okay, I would appreciate it, Mrs. McCusker, if you could, I mean, we'll let you come back, but I'd appreciate it if you could deal with this particular issue first, so we could get the pros and cons out on the table, and then go to some of the other issues you've raised in your letter, which are interesting issues, but not, not on this particular topic. But go ahead, I mean, you know, have at it.
Okay, thanks, this is, this is Pat McCusker with Ann McCusker.
Hi.
Hi.
And, you know, you've already addressed a couple of the questions that we brought up, you know, why would the amount of square footage make a difference as far as the decision? And Cohasset's bylaws, you know, do they actually say you can own to the middle of the street? That might not be the best description, and then, you know, add lot area is pretty descriptive as far as what, what, you know, you were discussing. Does it mean everybody owns to the middle of the street in Cohasset as far as the square footage?
Do you want an answer to that?
Um, I, I mean, I always want an answer, I guess I'm just bringing it up, Woody, so...
Well, I, well, let's, let's wait a second, Town Council, you were making a head move there, do you want to answer that particular point? Oh, you're muted, sorry, Cindy, another.
I think this is a very unique situation where you had a private way, where you had ownership of your land to the middle of the street, and that was taken from you, so you no longer had it by making it a public way. So, my belief is that most of the public ways in Cohasset, you no longer own the land underlying the roadway, so I don't think it's an accurate statement to say that everyone owns to the middle of the road, it's only on a private way where it's unclear and there wasn't retained ownership that you owned to the middle of the road, that was the rule laid down on a private way.
Okay, but they bought the house maybe two years ago, maybe less than that.
No, less than that.
So therefore, how would they own to the middle of the street if they bought the house two years ago, or even less than that? And it's a public way right now.
And it was. I believe they bought it with the precedent of a previous board decision saying, "We interpret our bylaws and our, our saving clause in section eight to apply," this was a taking that occurred back in, I believe, 1998, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
And that was not to harm anyone's land, and no damages were assessed. Here, if you, and, and that's how they, the board interpreted what it felt was meant by the taking, and what it felt its bylaws meant in the decision on Lot 36, when it said they owned it, they were okay until we took. We didn't mean to deprive a lot from being buildable, where every other lot in this subdivision of the same dimensions was okay, and I think the new lot owner coming to the table, looking at the history, was reasonable and relying that that was the position the board takes. And I think when you look at the Sears decision, it emphasizes the combination of what the board's position was, the local bylaw and the derelict fee statute taken all together, and it concludes, whether you look at the dicta or not, the holding could not be more clear in that it doesn't require the town to take the position of the appellant. It did not say you can't go that way if that's how you feel your laws and your situation and your case by case analysis of the situation and the equities comes out. And I think that's, I think that's really telling, in that this was confined to a very, very narrow set of facts, as a lot of these cases do, but I, I do believe the holding says what it says, and I do think that it was clear that they own and would own that land otherwise if it weren't for the taking, which the town did not pay damages and did not want to render a property unbuildable as a result of it, it was probably done, you know, because everyone wanted to make life easier for everyone, because people like public ways, the roads get maintained by the, by the town, and they don't have to deal with it as a private, private owners. So, that's my opinion.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I appreciate your, your thought on that and your opinion, however, does it really pass a sniff test? Does anybody that moves into a street think that they actually owned to the middle of their street just because it was a private way 50 years ago? I, it's just, I just want to voice my opinion on that, so, I've never heard of that before.
And I, and I think I could say too...
And I and I think I could say too, that, you know, in our letter, we did state that the former owner who had lived there since she was born, was told, I think, on several occasions through the course of history, that, you know, the answer is this is not a buildable lot. And it just seems wrong to us and many of the neighbors around. And there's also a lot of lots on this street that are similar sized and that, you know, would again, if this if this precedent is set, that opens up a big can of worms for likely more than just Oak Street, but probably a lot of other neighborhoods in Cohasset that we feel like, you know, we and we put in the letter, like, we personally, we can't speak for everyone else to sign the letter, but we personally moved to Cohasset to to feel like we're in a quaint, beautiful community. And I just, we just feel strongly that starting a precedent like this is going to turn into will be a city, you know, and this isn't, you know, what people go to Cohasset for and why people love Cohasset. Houses on top of each other. And it's just not. And it's just, you know, again, it's we don't think that having the historical, you know, information about the former owner that it's it's not the right thing to do to all of a sudden let some new person who just bought the house, you know, make this a buildable lot because he's got attorneys.
And also, in regards to that, Mary Brennick, her daughter apparently asked Bob Egan if she could sell, you know, her house as, you know, two lots. And verbally was told, no, but however, you know, speak to your attorney. I emailed Bob Egan in regards to that. And he said that happened a couple of times with two other people on the street.
Let's 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 keep our focus on this particular property or relevant, you know. Okay, and you've made another a couple of other points in your letter. You requested an in person meeting rather than a Zoom meeting. That cannot happen?
No, we understand that. That's perfectly okay. We just.
Okay.
We figured we wanted to look in everybody's eyes when they tell us.
Yeah. But as long as you understand that.
No, 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 we understand. Absolutely.
And and certainly, we're going to share, I think Jennifer Aron told you that all the documents that are referenced or submitted at our hearings are are public, become public.
Yeah.
Jennifer already shared shared a lot with us. So we appreciate that, Jen.
So I think, you know, from that standpoint, we're not trying to obviously hide anybody anything. And I think we understand the point of intent here. Was it an intention to buy a buildable lot? Or did people know, well, that's something we'll have to deliberate and discuss, but.
No, no, we appreciate that, Woody.
Okay. But and and we really, I don't think before us are going to be looking at many other properties in the entire town of Cohasset. That's really not our job. I mean, we take care of either special permits or or appeals of decisions on a particular case. I think Attorney Sullivan was getting at that earlier when he said this is a very specific case. But if we did a survey of the.
We know of five different lots on this street that are similar.
I think it's it's. This piece of this is a very odd situation, the 9,000 square foot, because the lot is owned in common with the adjacent lot. And that's what makes the 9,000 foot requirement effective. I don't know how many of those vacant lots are owned by the adjacent land owner. But those would be the only ones that would be similar.
Well, we count five.
Okay. Okay. Other are there other people in the queue, Jen? Are you muted? So I can't.
I know, I'm having. No, there is no one else. I mean, just look and see Michael Baker. Michael Baker said that McCusker's lot is the equivalent size of this lot. Property ownership is determined by both case law and by deed. There is no smell test. We did rely on the decision of the board and did not appreciate people opining on what we believe the owner attended the hearings of the lot. So he I believe that Mr. Baker owns the lot in question.
You mean 35? Is that what you're just talking about? Okay.
He's the applicant.
He's yeah, right.
Okay, okay. All right. Other other.
There's no one else.
No one else. So does anybody in the board have? First of all, I think we've got to continue this hearing because I think we need to digest the Sears versus Marshfield case and some other facts. But I.
Well, why would we need to? We've we've actually had a chance to read it. It was definitely referenced by Attorney Sullivan in the first hearing. I don't think there's any one here who doesn't have the context now. Maybe if you want to continue it, you can continue it. But I don't see any reason to continue it.
All right. Valid.
I would make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, the motion's been made. Now, is there any discussion on the part of other board members?
We don't have a second, so.
I know, I know. I wanted to find. Yeah, okay.
There may not be a second. It sounds like maybe there isn't a second. Anyway.
Would anybody in the board like to second?
I'm in trouble on this one because I missed one of the hearings. So I'm not sure I should vote.
This may that may be very problematic, Charlie, in this case, given all the water that went under the bridge at the first hearing.
I'll second Peter's motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Hi.
Hi. Peter?
Val Watkins. I. Okay, Woody, check eye.
All right. And yeah, Charlie, I think it may be we welcome your your comments. But as far as a vote goes, probably best that you not take a vote on this one. Okay, so this hearing has been closed. We have what, two weeks?
You have two weeks to file a decision, but you'll deliberate at the end of the meeting if anybody wants to stay on.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so that's been closed. The next one is 11 Sheldon Road.
That's correct. So that is 11 Sheldon. I'm going to promote Adam Brodsky.
All right, Attorney Brodsky, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chittick. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent Lee Schwartz, the property owner. The only new information I'm aware of is the letter which I wrote to the board on September 14, which addressed two issues. First, while Ms. Schwartz has no intention of using this building for anything other than a rec room, and in particular, has no interest in using it for a guest house, the board expressed concern that the building may be converted in the future to a guest house. So in an attempt to accommodate the board and at its suggestion, Ms. Schwartz agreed to amend the application to convert the building from a barn boathouse to a guest house slash rec room. And so we did submit and amended our application to that effect. And second, the board asked me to respond to Attorney Richard Henderson's letter to Mr. Wakeman dated September 8, 2020. And again, I spent some time in that letter articulating these points in more detail, but I'll just hit the high points. First, I want to make clear that Ms. Schwartz is not seeking to remove any condition from the 1998 special permit. And in fact, she's not relying upon the special permit at all. That special permit authorized the construction of a boathouse on a nonconforming lot. It's interesting, when I went back and looked at the special permit, I noticed that it contained five conditions. And what I'm going to characterize as one stipulation, and that was the word that was used in that last paragraph, that the applicant stipulated that the boathouse would have no plumbing or be used as a guest house. And respectfully suggests that if indeed that is a stipulation as opposed to a condition of the permit, it would apply only to the applicants at the time and to no other subsequent persons, which has been consistent with my argument all along, that you can't restrict the lawful and allowed use of that building in perpetuity. But Mr. Bobo, who was the applicant at the time, could stipulate that they would not use the building as a guest house while they owned it. And I think that's a reasonable reading, given that very particular language of that paragraph. But if indeed it is the board's belief that that language rises to a level of a permit condition, it relates only to the boathouse use. And Ms. Schwartz is not seeking to use the building as a boathouse. All she wants to do is convert the existing building to the allowed guest house rec room use. And then, second, very briefly, the doctrine of race judicata is simply inapplicable. And I found a case, I think directly on point, Petrillo versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Cohasset on this issue. And that case concerned the appeal of a decision of this board approving the combination of two lots, one in Cohasset and one in Situate, to allow the construction of a new dwelling as a matter of right on a conforming lot. The neighbor appealed that decision and argued that a prior decision of the board precluded, the prior decision of the board was precluded by race judicata. And the problem with the argument is that that prior decision was a special permit decision which allowed the reconstruction of the existing dwelling on the Cohasset lot only. The problem with that decision, referred to as decision number one, is that despite the fact that that case didn't address the combination of lots issues, the board put some language in this decision that said that lots can't be combined in two different towns. Candidly, that was a mistake of the board because the board subsequently determined is affirmed by the appeals court that you can, under the Cohasset zoning bylaw, combine two lots in different towns. But the neighbor tried to argue in decision two that it was precluded by decision one, and the appeals court said, no, race judicata doesn't apply. The identity of the causes of action in the two matters were different, and the issues were not the same. So similarly, the issue in the 1998 special permit in this case was the construction of the barn and boathouse on a nonconforming lot. There's no other reference in any of the materials from that special permit with respect to a guest house other than what appears in the stipulation. And I respectfully suggest that that singular and somewhat marginal reference to the guest house in that stipulation was not essential to the special permit decision. So the issue in 1998 is not identical to the issue in this matter, and race judicata is not applicable. So that was the sum and substance of my letter. And again, I see that Ms. Amara, Town Council, is is on the line. And we've had some conversations as to how the board should resolve this matter. And I'll leave it to Ms. Amara to speak, obviously, on this issue. But it was suggesting that a section six finding would be most appropriate here. The section six finding would determine that that Ms. Schwartz proposed use will not result in an intensification of any existing nonconformities, which is the purpose of a section six finding as opposed to a grant of a special permit. And as you know, we're not proposing any changes to the building. We're simply all any exterior changes to the building. We're simply requesting the change from one allowed use to another allowed use, which is permissible under the zoning bylaws. I'm happy to answer any questions.
A picky one first, and then I'll turn it over to the board. Your contention is that stipulation is not the same as a condition.
I was struck when reviewing the special permit for the 100th time, that the permit actually calls out five conditions. And then it says it is stipulated by the applicants that the the building will not be used. And and I was struck by that language. Whether that was the intention of the board or not, I do not know. But that language is different than the other conditions called conditions in the special permit.
Okay. We can deal with that as as it comes up. But all right, I understand your contention. Board members. Oh, there's yeah. Well, while we have Attorney Brodsky here, I asked him some questions. I would like to be sure that in the record is entered a letter from Timothy Davis of the 13th of September, which we received, obviously, after the hearing on the 8. And I can he may or may not be present here. If he isn't, I'll summarize it. If he is present, he can speak to it. But first, let's ask Attorney Brodsky, any questions that we may have while he's before us? Questions?
I was curious. Charlie Higgins in here. It says no plumbing. But it also says that the boathouse is attached to the town sewer. That means there must have been some plumbing done since the decision, because there wasn't a town sewer at the time decision.
Yes, I think the house was subsequently tied to sewer. I don't know with respect to the barn building.
Oh, so you're saying the application dealt with the the lot itself and any structures plural on it?
Correct. The lot has sewer available to it.
I think we might have had some discussion in one of our first meeting in regards to maybe some concessions that were made at the at the house in regards to sewer. I'll look back at my notes here. But is it is it like, remember, the applicant shed some clarification on what the home was cited for for sewer versus, you know.
They gave up some bedrooms in order to possibly sewer this new structure. Wasn't that what was the testimony was?
Yeah. Correct. That's correct, Ms. Or.
Woody? So the present barn slash boathouse does have sewer, you know? The sewer line didn't bypass this and go directly to the to the house?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Chittick. But I certainly can acquire from either Ms. Murphy, the designer, or Mr. DiNuno, who's the contractor. And they're probably on the line.
They are. They are here. So is the board done asking questions? We'll get to the public.
I think Dave McMorris has something.
I have one.
And maybe.
If you are changing this building to a an allowed use, am I correct in understanding the reason you're here is out of an abundance of caution?
Mr. McMorris, we're here because the building inspector would not issue the building permit without us first coming to the board. And as I expressed, I think in the first hearing.
Okay.
I don't think we need relief because we're simply converting one allowed use to another allowed use. But we're here at the request of the building inspector. And again, Ms. Ms. Amara thinks that it may be appropriate in this instance to use a section six finding to simply confirm that nothing that we're proposing is going to intensify any of the existing nonconformities with respect to the lot, which was the reason why they sought a special permit in 1998.
Peter?
I don't think I have any questions at the present time. I've had a chance to read Mr. Brodsky's letter, the other letter. I feel reasonably informed.
Okay. How about Charlie or Matt or Lee? Okay. How about Charlie or Matt or Lee?
No question.
Now, Adam, do you have either of those two individuals? Just, just so we can kind of clarify that point, is there, has this been plumbed? Is there searing service to this barn or not?
I can, I can have Mr. DiNuno, the contractor, Mr. DiNuno. I've just let a lot put him on to speak.
Hello?
Hi.
It is not currently connected to sewer. The pump is located in between the two structures, and it has not been connected yet. We did fill out an application with the sewer department, and they said they would approve it as long as we got approval from zoning.
Hey, Charlie, that answers your question. I would like to be sure that everybody, Jen, do we have Mr. Davis here to speak to his letter of the 13th? Or should I?
We do, yes. No, he is here. I just also wanted to, I have a letter, Ms. Susan Acton of 269, also sent a letter, which will go on the record, and I do have it. And I believe I've sent it to everybody, but for the public to say, "As a neighbor of Love and Shallow Road, I object to the granting of a special permit to change the use of a barn-boathouse to a guest room/recreation room with a kitchenette and bathroom. I like the zoning board of appeals to enforce the provisions of the 1998 zoning permit that stipulate no plumbing. If you decide to offer relief for a guest house/recreation room permit, it should be the same definition as the current definition of guest house in the zoning bylaws." And she goes on to give the definition, and then gave her, I just want to put that in the record. And then I can allow Mr. Davis to speak, if that works for everybody.
Sure.
All right, I'll do that now.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Davis, you are there.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Loud and clear.
Thank you. The, I appreciate your deliberation here. The first issue is the sewer has not been connected to the boathouse at this point. I guess there are two issues or two questions I would have. One is, has the main house been upgraded to the bedrooms that were negotiated out of it when all of this happened 20 years ago? And I use 20 years as kind of a general. So that's a question. I don't, I've seen a lot of work there. I don't know whether there have been additional bedrooms added that were negotiated out, but that's a question. The second thing is, I think that the neighbors are particularly concerned about adding another dwelling on a small lot. And if it was stipulated in whatever agreement that it was a guest house and came under the regulations, Cohasset regulations, of a guest house, which means it can't be rented, it can't provide revenue, I think the neighbors would probably acquiesce. So that, that, those, one question and one comment.
Okay. I can't certainly answer the plumbing issue vis-à-vis bedrooms in the house. Whether it's relevant or not, I'm not even sure, but, Adam, do you wish to?
Yes, I'm happy to answer or respond to Mr. Davis's questions. First, I just want to make clear that Ms. Schwartz actually doesn't want to use this building as a guest house. She simply wants to use it as a recreation room. You may recall, she actually has a guest house in Situate. Regardless, we will need to comply with the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So this will only be used consistent with how guest houses are used. It will not be rented. It will be used intermittently by family members. And then I don't recall any discussion with respect to number of bedrooms with respect to the 1998 special permit. I think the issue arose when we last discussed the matter as to whether or not there would be sufficient sewer capacity for the building. And I think in response to that, and Nino will, will correct me if I'm wrong, we said that there was an adjustment made to account for the boathouse being converted to a guest house so that we would not exceed our current sewer capacity. And I thought that was the context, but I'm happy to be corrected on that.
I promoted Mr. DiNuno to address that question.
I, yes, there has been an elimination of a bedroom in the main house to be able to have the allowance of plumbing in the guest house.
Other questions of the board? Either for Mr. Davis or Attorney Brodsky?
To, to probably make myself unpopular for the second successive hearing, I'd like to move things along a little bit. I haven't had any dinner. So I probably would like to, I will propose that we close the hearing.
Okay. Do I get a second? David McMorris seconded, but he was quiet, silent. You're muted, David. Yeah.
Dave McMorris, second.
Okay, anyone else? What do you, Chedekai?
He dies, die.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Peter Gertikai.
Charlie? I missed part of this hearing, so I'm not voting.
Okay. Well, it's been moved seconded, and the vote is five to nothing. So we have now closed the hearing.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you. The third hearing, I'm recusing myself on the third continuance is 75 Pleasant Street. And Peter, I'm going to ask you to take that on, and I'll mute myself.
All right. That way we won't miss your friendly visage. So have we received anything else on this one, Jen?
We did not receive anything new. I don't know. I think Ms., John's here, John Cheryaki, but I did not receive anything new from any neighbors or anything.
Okay. And there was one sort of, not, it wasn't, it wasn't something anybody needed to resolve, but there was a neighbor who had wanted to look at the plans and had had a question about the construction, which isn't strictly a zoning question, given that there was a retaining wall between the two properties. Otherwise, people were in favor. Did we hear anything more from that butter, Jen, over the period in question?
No, that was Marty Corey, and I have not received any, I don't know whether he requested or looked at the plans through the billing department. I wasn't told he was, so I think.
Okay. Well, it's not really a zoning issue anyway, but if he were here or had asked to speak or had any further reservations, I certainly would want to give him his, his chance. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Cheryaki, who is here? If not, I would entertain a motion to, go ahead, Jen.
I just, we still have Mr. DiNuno here, and he had raised his hand. Mr. DiNuno, did you need to speak regarding this application? I'm not sure if he's the contractor on it, so I just wanted.
Oh, okay.
So.
Maybe he's not really with us, only an electronic, electronic ghost.
Electronic handprint.
Yeah, handprint or whatever. So I would entertain a motion to close this hearing?
A motion to close the hearing.
All right. Lee has moved that we close the hearing. Is there a second?
Dave McMorris, second.
I'll second it.
Oh, I guess we got two seconds here. Let's proceed to a vote. And I don't know, the order I've got here across the top is David, Matt, and then Charlie and Lee. You guys want to take it in that order?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Again, I missed one of these hearings.
There's only been one. Were you here for that one?
No.
Okay. Then that leaves it to you, Lee.
Aye.
Okay. We are closed. Woody, back to you. Woody, you're muted. Woody, you're muted.
There I go. I can hear you. I just, a little bit slow on the fingers here. Okay, we have a new hearing tonight filed by architect Roger Hoyt on behalf of his clients Randall and Andrea Steele on River Road, 31 River Road, to construct a new garage. Actually, I think to construct a new garage, and it appears to be connected to an existing, but we'll find out. So if the architect, Roger Hoyt, wants to take the lead on this, or is it going to be the applicant, Mr. Steele?
I just promoted Mr. Steele because I don't see the architect, so we can ask the applicant if he's planning on attending, if he's under a different name. Oh, Nancy's iPad. Here she is.
We got a very nice chair there, but no Lee.
I think I just promoted Nancy, I think it's Nancy Hoyt, which is Mr., and then the landowner.
Hi, Randall Steele here.
Okay, who's going to lead off? Explain the kind of relief and why.
I think that Roger was going to, but I see that he's muted here. So I guess I can start off if he's not.
Well, I see on Nancy's iPad, it's now unmuted.
Okay.
I am here.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
There he is.
All right, over to you.
Good evening, Woody. Nice to see you. I'm Roger Hoyt, architect, Randy and Andrea Steele at 31 River Road. The property contains approximately 93,000 square feet or 2.1 acres. The property is boarded to the east by the Gulf and to the south by the Cohasset Conservation Trust, to the west by the Miller property, and to the north by the River Road and the Oddleton driveway. River Road ends where the steel gravel driveway enters the property, and the Oddleton private paved drive continues down to the water's edge. The existing steel garage is 18 foot wide, not wide enough for two cars and wall storage on either side, is also 80 years old and not in great shape structurally. This building will be renovated, upgraded with new windows and siding, and re-supporting the roof and the wall structure, and turned into a workshop. There was a workshop in the basement in-house, but continuous groundwater flow has convinced the Steels to look elsewhere for a workshop area. The workshop will be connected to the rear of the new garage by a pergola. The space between the steel property line, Oddleton, and steel driveways is separated by a dense tree line made up mostly of evergreens. The existing garage, proposed workshop, is 9.2 feet from the rear and 11.5 feet from the normally property line. None of the tree cover that's in between the Oddleton driveway and the steel property will be affected by the new garage construction or the workshop renovations. The proposed garage is set 12 feet from the existing property line. The northeast corner of the existing house has not changed during the main house renovations, which are just about complete. The Steels are due to move in this week. The main entrance to the house is from the existing driveway to the entrance, new entrance portico. The proposed garage location has a 14-foot separation from the rear left corner of the house to the front right corner of the garage, which gives a narrow view of the Gulf and the marshland. It also makes the transition from the detached garage to the house much more manageable in poor weather. The eight-foot difference between the zoning table, 20-foot sideline setback, and the proposed 12-foot setback, simple separation visually, does not adversely affect the neighbors' driveway access to their property. The neighborhood Oddletons have sent a letter to the zoning board stating that the proposed garage will not negatively impact our property in any way. The eve line of the new garage is 10 feet off the grade, and the ridge is 20 feet high. The adjacent trees are 30 to 40 feet high, and the gable end of the existing house is 34 foot off the ground. On behalf of Randy and Andrea Steele, we respectfully, in board of appeals, grant the Steels a variance to locate the new garage 12 feet instead of 20 feet from the property sideline as described in the variance application in the Zoom public hearing. Thank you for your consideration.
Was that really a variance when I saw special permit in the agenda?
No, the applications for a special permit, the application.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke, sorry.
You had us, you had us a little worried there, Roger.
That would have been a short conversation, but no. I gather, Roger, that this proposed garage is not going any closer to the lot lines. In fact, it looks like it's set back a tad over the, away from the lot line than the existing garage. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was our intention, to try and make it further away from the existing structure.
But it's not a replacement, it's in addition to.
Well, yes, the garage is going to be reconfigured into something else, and it, but it is attached in the rear to the new proposed garage.
Yeah, this is Randy Steele.
Sure, go ahead.
I just say that thank you for your time tonight and for your consideration of this. This is the final, final piece of the renovation project, which has been ongoing of my family home, which my parents lived in over 50 years. Part of the scope of the project was to try to keep the look and feel of the home that they lived in. And I think Roger's done a really good job of doing that with the renovation of the home, as well as with this, the design of this garage. And as he said, it does sit behind a pretty good buffer of evergreen trees that kind of buffer it from the Oddleton's driveway. Our, we really appreciate the support we've had from all of our neighbors on River Road, and especially the Oddletons. We've seen the plans and are very supportive of the project. So we hope that you guys will look favorably on this application.
Okay. So questions of Mr. Hoyt, most likely?
And I think all this looks lovely, but it's creating a new non-conformity.
Would you consider it a new non-conformity or an extension of an existing non-conformity?
Well, I mean, there's a pergola between the two.
Go ahead. Finish, finish the thought.
I don't know how we've treated these in the past, whether it's a separate structure or it's considered to be an extension of that existing garage. But I think how we consider it makes a big difference.
Did we have something like this on Gammons at one point in time?
We might have. You mean that barn near where Al Weisenthal at one point lived?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we did. Yes, yes. We connected a barn to, it was a potting shed or something.
Yeah.
That goes back.
Not only do we have the question of whether or not it's a new non-conformity or an extension of an existing non-conformity, which I do think is the $64 question, but I don't think we've had any testimony about the increase or any calculations about the increased area within the setback. I went down the other day and briefly looked at it, but I did not have the benefit of having seen the plans yet. I'd be curious to know from Mr. Hoyt the calculations regarding not just, you know, we're a little further back from the lot line, but what are we doing in terms of the change versus the present?
You mean volume?
I'm probably less concerned about volume because you don't look at volume for the most part. And I am encouraged that the Oddleifsons appear to be in support from the letter. But I'm, I'd also like to know how much facade area we're adding within the setback.
32 feet long at that on the Norway property line by the eight feet into the setback. So. I'm gonna have my math.
And how, and how, and how high is it, Roger?
It's, the eve line is 10 feet.
The eve line is 10 feet. There's, there's some roof there too, as I.
It's about 480 square.
That's correct. And the ridge line is 20 feet.
Okay, but we're not all the way to the ridge line then at the, in there, are we?
No. No, the setback height runs 10 feet in that triangle from 10 feet up to the 20 feet.
So it's somewhere between 10 and 20. Let's just ballpark it for a moment at 15 times, did you say 32 feet in length?
Yes.
So.
30 feet, Roger.
30 feet?
Yeah.
That makes it easy, 450.
Yep. If, if the 15 is correct.
Do we have to confirm the 15 because of the 12 foot from the lot line at this location?
I, I think, I think we should.
We have to make the 15, right?
If we decide that it's a permissible extension as opposed to the creation of, I think we'd want to decide based on some semi-objective point of view. So having a calculation wouldn't hurt.
Hang on, I'm doing it right now.
I mean, for the edification of the board, we haven't had one of these for a while. There was a case up in Church Street in Beachwood where a detached garage or barn, whatever the heck it was, was attached to a house and it's considered part of that, part of that main house. It was an extension. And I think we've always treated these, once they're attached, as extensions of the principal structure, in this case, the, I guess, the existing garage. So, I don't know. It looks to me like an extension of a non-conformity.
But it is the, I kind of liked David's question. Does the pergola tying this together meet the proverbial sniff test of an extension versus, I mean?
It's, yeah, it's attached in four, four different locations at each corner.
I have the luxury of having two screens tonight, so I'm going to go back from the site plan to the elevation for a moment.
I just did calculate the, in a 16-foot, about four inches at that point where it crosses the setback line.
Okay.
It would be about 480 square, 480 square feet.
Okay.
How far is the Oddleifson's house from the property line? It's not shown on the plot plan.
Well, the, the house itself is probably 150 feet. If you go down the driveway, it goes right down towards the, I don't want to call it a river, but I guess the Gulf is what his term is. And the out of the house then is probably 150 feet to the left. It takes the driveway, takes a hard turn left and then goes about that much distance from, from the property line.
Wouldn't hurt.
You can't see it from the, from the driveway.
Yeah.
There are trees, very heavily treated.
You really can't even see it from our house, you're up in our house.
Hey, were you suggesting you'd like to see a, sort of an amended site plan showing the Oddleifson house?
Well, our bylaw or our
Yeah, requirement.
Application regulations require it on, you know, the adjacent structures.
I did talk to, not to interrupt, I did talk to Mr. Hoyt about that, but the reason it wasn't put on is because it was so far off the plan and we have allowed that before. That's the only reason. We didn't talk about amending it, just so you know.
Okay. I don't, I mean, I'm fine with it. I just like to be consistent.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had one down on Jerusalem Road in the SAG where the house got blown up, if you will, and the, a lot of the abutters were too far away to log on the site plan. That was fairly recent, a year or two.
Would it, would it make a difference in anybody's thinking here on the board, board thinking, if we determined that this was not just an extension of an existing non-conformity by virtue of the pergola, but it was a new structure?
Wouldn't need a variance?
Yeah. So I think, that's why I said I thought David's question was pretty much to the point. The pergola is fairly insubstantial in relation to. On the other hand, if you had something that was more substantial, then you'd have potentially more in the setback, so. Unless you moved it, moved the connection to outside of the setback because the pergola itself is in the setback. I mean, I don't know if we're being, if I'm being a bit of a sophist on this, but.
Yeah, the face of the pergola is 18 feet from the property line. Because the pergola is back from the safe, the face of the proposed garage. The garage is being 12 feet, the face of the pergola is 18 feet from the property line.
That one on Gammons Road, Woody, what was the connection there? Was it like a walkway, a covered walkway?
I wish I could remember. I remember the, there was a potting shed that was open to the elements or at least, you know, it, one or two of its sides were open and it was a seasonal potting shed and it, it, they connected, they, they enhanced it and, and it connected then the garage to the house. The garage, I believe, was not connected at all.
And that's how we got around the question of extension versus creation?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't even know if we got as far as getting around it as much as this was their proposal. Jen, do you remember?
I think it was the Wise property on Gammons and it was the Carriage House and then they wanted to extend. And you had a lot of conversation about that. I can know, I could pull those minutes in that decision. Remember, it was, they changed it, I think, after some conversations and I can't remember in which direction, whether it was, yes, it was an extension, but I do know it was the Wise house on Gammons.
Be worth looking at, Jen.
I can, I can pull that and get that to everybody. We'll be continuing anyway, so.
Yep.
Yeah, Jen, just wanted to mention that the fact that the pergola roof connects both to the work, workshop and the garage on both sides as well as across the top. So it's, it's not, it's really not a separate structure. It is connected to both ends of this.
It doesn't have any real function other than one of visual appeal.
Activity.
Tying the two together. I guess, I mean, I.
From a weather point of view.
Yeah, well, it is, it does have, you know, it has a rooftop over the struts. So it is, you know, it is a piece of structure that connects the two, both the workshop and the garage.
So is it, does it, does it have, it has a roof along the, where is it?
Yeah, it has two girders going across. It has the slats and then there's a roof going across that so that you actually can get from one structure to the other without basically getting soaked if it's raining or snow.
Okay.
That shows on that drawing, 826 between the two buildings.
Okay, I'm looking at 825. Let me get to 826. I don't know if I got that.
In the middle, you see that?
Yeah, I've got 25 up, but I'm not sure I copied.
I don't see the roof.
I don't either. But I'm on 825 and that's a floor plan.
Right. 826.
Can you share, can you, can you put that, can you put that on our, can you share that with us? Is that part of the technology we've got here?
I don't know. We'll see.
See that, right there?
Where?
On top of the sled. Those are the horizontals. That's the end of the cross pieces and that's the roof piece on top.
I don't think.
I'm not sure it's coming through.
Yeah.
Is it, can you see it now?
No.
They don't have any video. I asked them to start it, I think. They came in without video. I think that's part of the problem.
Okay.
I can show you, I can show you my little plan, but that probably isn't going to help.
That's, that's, that's the elevation though. You can't tell from that. And 825 is a floor plan. I don't have 826 up. I can go back.
I just showed you 826.
Yeah, whoever, that was Woody puts that up.
Oh, I got it. Oh, 826, but that just shows the, the side. So we, you know, we don't know from that whether there actually is a roof.
Well, it does, yeah, it does show it.
It shows a connection, but whether or not it's.
Yeah, you've got, you've got the two columns. You just, you have the girder going across the slats and then there's a roof piece right on top of it. So, you know, connects the two structures with those, actually four, the posts, the column, the columns, the girder going across the pergola struts and then the roof on top. Those are all shown on that drawing, 826 in the middle, as well as they want at the bottom.
So the thing that we see on the top is the roof, not a railing?
That's correct.
Okay. That makes it a little more like Gammons Road. I thought that was a railing.
Oh, I see where you.
No, did you, again, I did. This is the first time I've done this, so bear with me. Do you now see that the drawing, the ones who don't have 826, can you see?
Yeah, I have 826 and I'm looking at it. And I think David's comment was right. I think I was looking at the element above the beam as a railing rather than a, than a roof.
That's three pergola struts that go across and then you have on top of that, which is a solid line above it.
Well, the issue in front of us still is, is the proposed garage an extension or is it a new structure and creating a new non-conformity? Do other board members want to either ask questions or?
Who's got the, who's got the definition of a structure handy?
Well, I do.
I would if I were in the apartment, but I'm in the office.
All right. See. Structure is a combination of materials combined at a fixed location to give support or shelter such as a bin, a bridge, a building, a dock, a fence, a framework, a flagpole, platform, retaining wall, reviewing stand, sign, stadium, swimming pool, tank, tennis court, tent, tower, trestle and a tunnel. I haven't had too many tunnels in my days on the board. It's just a combination of, of materials at a fixed location to give support or shelter.
So it doesn't, it doesn't even really require a roof, even though we do have a roof here.
Yeah. It could, could be support, but it should have, yeah.
So, so, I mean, I think we could, I mean, these are all in the eye of the beholders. And we're a long way from anybody else. Yeah, I guess the only thing, I mean, I, we're going to continue it anyway because that's our practice. I don't know what anybody else would like, but I'd like a calculation of the existing facade area within the setback and a calculation of the combined area within the setback. And I think that can include, although it won't change things much, it's almost like, you know, the footings on a dock, dock passageway, might as well put whatever the.
Pergola.
A pergola area turns out to be that's within the setback. Not too much, that's for sure. And then we have to figure out, you know, we have to figure out if, if it's an extension or, or a, or a new non-conformity. If it's an extension, is it substantially more detrimental? And.
Yeah. I guess, Roger, would you like to, why don't we make the assumption for the, for the moment that it's an extension? Could you speak to the test we have to apply, which is that it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or dangerous in any way? Roger, you're muted, but. Jen, can we unmute Roger? Or does Roger have to do that?
I just asked him to unmute. He hasn't do it.
Have you got me now?
Yep.
I just pushed that button. Do you have me now?
We can hear you now.
That northern property line is about 700 feet. That northern property line is about 700 feet long. And we're talking about total of 30 feet, the length of that new garage and the existing existing garage workshop is 26 feet long. So it wouldn't be too hard to calculate exactly how much of those structures are in the 20-foot setback. So that we can have that information for you.
Yeah, for our next hearing. But also, would you speak to the, to the test we have to apply that whatever the dimensions are, this is or is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Oh, it certainly is not, because there's the, there are two residences beyond the Odellsons that are on River Road, again, which are really not affected by this at all. The one structure.
I think we've lost him.
McConaughey property basically ends at just beyond where the steel's driveway goes into the property. And then Odellson takes, takes over his private drive. It's basically, it goes all the way down to the end, and then goes about 150 feet going straight down the sheet. If it would be helpful, I also would be happy to get a tape measure and measure from the edge of that driveway and the property line how far that house is, but my sense is at least 150 feet. And that's, and the McConaughey property is the house itself is beyond where the septic system shown on the steel property to the west of that there's nothing in this entire area that's affected. And of course, it's the Conservation Trust that's to the south of the property, that entire area behind them. So they're really wrong because there isn't a house in sight of anything that we're doing here with this garage and workshop. But that would be helpful. Happy to get attention. Questions asked about how far out some houses without sending the surveyor out, and then you'll see our way that is, and that doesn't affect me here. But I can have that, I can have those dimensions and the square footage is for you at our next hearing.
That would be good. Dave, what questions or requests do you have, if any?
I don't have any.
Lee?
No.
Matt?
No, I was just looking at one thing. I'm not quite sure about the question, how great of a question it is, but if is there not an opportunity to move the structure, you know, eight feet? And I'm not sure if we would-
Make it conforming, in other words.
Determine that it would, yeah, I guess, you know, then we'd have to look at, do we consider that conforming, you know, because it's an addition, if it was an addition on to the the other one, but at least all the structure itself would be the new portion of it would be conforming. So is there a restriction there that prohibits you from doing that?
Question is, Roger.
I'm sorry, am I muted again?
No, you're fine. You're cutting in and out, but go ahead.
Okay. All right. The proposed garage is 14 feet from the corner, the rear corner of the house. So if we moved it back to the 20 feet, you'd have six feet between that garage building and the end of the existing house, which is 34 foot high. So it makes a substantial difference in terms of the appearance on the site. As you drive in, there is no, in that case, it becomes a tunnel that is not very, what's the right word?
Yeah, no, I can see that.
Aesthetic.
Could you possibly move the proposed garage in back of the existing garage? As opposed to next to the side, you know? I don't know.
You could, but I think you know, with trying to get from the garage to the house a much longer, the idea here is that they get close to the portico entrance so that you could come out of the side of the road and get in the house fairly easily. And again, I don't think, certainly from the Odellson's standpoint, it won't make any any difference to them whether it's there or in front. As a matter of fact, for them, it's probably better if it's in front than behind the existing. And then that makes it really sort of difficult to get without going, you know, through the workshop or around it. Which goes along going down to the, just all in the
Okay, thanks. And yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, our job's not to be the design police. I just wanted to ask the question because, you know, as David indicates, I mean, some people may view this as a additional nonconforming structure as well. So I don't have any other questions.
Well, I think it would be very, very helpful for members of the board if at some point between the next hearing, you could actually get go down the property and just take a look at the situation. We think it is quite evident if you stand there that this piece, regardless of the number of in that percentage that's be affected in there from that long northerly property line. It is, and it's not just the fact that these are all decisions, most of them are evergreens. And as you say, as you stand at the, at the end of River Road, you really can't see the Odellson house until you get right down to the corner and turn left on the driveway until you, that's that's really the first time you can actually see the house from the driveway.
Okay. Well, I think we've asked a couple of things, and I think another site visit never, ever hurts. So I'd make a motion that we continue this. I mean, I don't want to cut off anybody's questions or line of thinking here. I mean, are there other requests we have of the applicant?
Woody, is that a letter from the Odellsons, go on record?
Yes.
I think Jen has that. I have a copy. I have a copy over here, but it would be helpful, but it's-
We have it.
Yeah, we have it. It was in our packet.
It is useful.
Great, thank you.
Now, just as a, as a owner, just to go on record to say that the Odellsons have been very supportive of it and have no objections to the location of it as it's drawn up here.
Okay, yes, we can see that. All right, well, I'd make a motion that we continue this until November 10th.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Let's go, start with you, Dave. All in favor?
Hey, McMorris, aye.
What do you check, aye?
Peter Gerda, aye.
Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Charlie?
Charlie against an aye.
And Lee?
Lee Darcey, aye.
Lee, okay, good. So this has been moved and continued until the 10th of November. There was a, going to be another hearing. It's been continued and continued, and that's the the condominiums at 124 and 87 Elm Street, but I believe, Jen, that's also been requested.
They did, they did request with the new plans being issued. The reason they do is that with the, whatever's going to be on the ground is, makes more sense to come with the final set of plans, so they have- Yeah. So they've submitted a request to continue.
All right, well, I'd make a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue this until at the earliest November 10th, and we'll see what, what transpires at that point. So I've made a motion to continue.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Let's take it again. Dave?
Dave McMorris, aye.
What do you check, aye? Yeah, Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
And Lee?
Lee Darcey, aye.
Did I hear you, Charlie? Say yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Okay, so now we move into a deliberation phase. So I thank you, Roger, and Randy for coming, and we will talk again about a month.
Information. To have all of the calculations, it would be helpful.
Okay, yep. That's good. And if there's any doubt or ambiguity, please reach out to Jen Arm, who can, you know, I'm sure, clarify if you need that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's take the first, anybody want to, want to take a quick break, or can we go right into the 35 Oak Street?
Couple minutes.
What?
Couple minute break?
Yeah, okay. Want to take a couple minute break?
Sounds good to me.
All right, why don't we do that?
He was still talking. Get off.
Okay, we got three back. We need David, Peter, and Lee in town council. Lee's back. I should have put them on the clock. There we go.
There's, there's Peter.
All right. All right, so we're back, full strength. Jen, you're dark. You're welcome to show your smiling face if you want, but-
Just shopping, not just kidding.
Yeah, I know, I know. Multi-tasking. Don't give me that. Don't give me that at all. Okay, so now, now we're back at 35 Oak, which is the most mentioned to David today, vexing situation we've had in a while. Who wants to start off a discussion here? We have, on the one hand, the precedent issue. The other hand, we have the Sears case. On the other hand, we have definition of lot. We can go back and forth. Peter?
I sense that after listening to some of your lines of thought on questioning with Mr. Sullivan and whatever it is, McCusker, that I may like David's line of reasoning more than, David likes David's line of reasoning. I, I, I thought the precedent, the decision we made before was the right one. I still think it's the right one. I do see that you could read that case fairly narrowly. But I do like Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan's line of reasoning that it doesn't require, but it allows. I do think that if we had intended to take value from people in town meeting, we would have then offered to compensate people. I think it would be very unfair to reverse the precedent that we set. And while I understand that the Sears, and I don't, and I don't think the difference in size means anything. My thing, Attorney Sullivan was throwing that in because it was there. You know, 5,000 feet to Marshfield might be 9,000 feet to us. That sounds like a snobby thing to say. But I still like David's line from before. Five lots potentially in this neighborhood. It's a dense neighborhood anyway. I don't think it has any line of, should have any bearing on our on our thought process. And I'm, unless somebody comes up with a whole lot more than what we've heard so far, I want to keep the precedent in place and support the original decision that David made and reverse the building inspector.
All right, David, why don't you, you want to give an opinion? You want to wait and listen to the-
Rather waits.
Okay. Matt, you came up with the case.
Yeah, I think, you know, so for this one, for me, I guess I'll start by saying, you know, I was on the board and I supported the original decision. I did go back and take a harder look at the decision because I think one of the things first in my mind before I had to read it again was I had a hard time with, you know, grandfathering someone who recently bought the property. You know, those rights, in other words, you knew what you were buying when, when you purchased the lot. Even though I know that was the case in the previous one, but I kind of took a deeper dive on that. I think in doing so, one of the things I requested and Jen was able to get was just the language from the Article 25 that was at the town meeting, because I thought about it in today's world, and I was kind of thinking if if somebody was going to take something of yours and not provide you any sort of compensation, potentially damage you, like, there would probably be a neighborhood uprising for it. And, I mean, when I read the article, it says, you know, to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain. Obviously, we've had testimony that says that they weren't given any sort of, either purchase or gift. My gut was kind of wondering, well, you know- My gut was kind of wondering, well, you know, did they get a sewer betterment in lieu of? But I couldn't find anything to, to show that that was the case, but nonetheless, as I wrestled with that, and then I did some more research on the derelict fee stuff today and found the case from Marshfield. I thought that, to me anyways, was kind of like pretty telling that this, that, that the statute was really meant to deal with the enforcement of property rights rather than, you know, to potentially allow this lot area for zoning purposes. A couple of good lines in there that I thought that, that kind of helped to convince me that, that it was okay to take a look at this from a different lens, even though I had agreed with the decision that we made back in 2017. So I think compounding those couple of issues, you know, I, I can see like the precedent thing in my mind kind of becomes, and maybe this isn't the right way to look at it, but almost like a opportunistic kind of a... It's really, it's not a loophole, I understand that because we made the decision and we stood by it. But I think, you know, even if it is five lots, I think that my opinion now of it is that, that the derelict fee gives us some, some good language in providing sound reasoning to agree that the building inspector made the right decision and not issuing the building permit would be my opinion.
Lee, what about you?
Well, she's refused.
She's refused.
Oh, refused, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, Dave and Charlie, have you had a chance to absorb much of this, or is this all still swirling around?
I, I think I go, go along with Peter. I think equity is in the side of granting a building permit. We add, I also stickler on precedent. And finally, I think the statute, that Marshfield decision looks to local, local zoning authorities to make their own decision.
All right. I've gone back and forth in this one. I look at, at both the, the Article 25, that taking, which, what they really took or cited to take is easements for drainage, utility, and other purposes. They didn't, I, I suspect the issue of compensation didn't come up because there wasn't a lot of taking other than easements for drainage and utility. But I also go back to our definition of lot, 8.3 talks about a lot that's registered in the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds and the, and the issue of lot is, if I take, as I always try to do, at least the, the literal meaning. Our definition of lot is an area or parcel of land in one ownership defined by meets and bounds or boundary lines in a recorded deed or recorded plan. And what's recorded in, in the Norfolk County is a lot of 8,001 seven square feet. And it's also cited, I think, in the deed as the lot ends at, there's a front lot line. Isn't that right, Dave? I have...
It's a lot definition here.
So, so it, an area that goes beyond what's, what's in a recorded deed or recorded plan would not, by our definition, count as a lot. There's a lot extension. It's not been recorded, it's not been registered. I don't know. I mean, that, there's that part of it that concerns me. We can't go back to the, I think, I think this was 69, not 55. I may be wrong, but the drafters were really bright people. Barbara Power and Dan Cotton, for anybody who's been around town for a couple of decades or more, Barbara, of course, being a member of this board for decades. They knew what they were doing. I don't think they, the development up in the hillside escaped their, their notice. They were quite familiar with this and why they settled in 9,000, I have no earthly idea. It could have been 7,000 or 12,000, but they chose 9,000. And I'm, I'm sure they did it with some, some intention, but we'll never know. I just throw, throw that out there that I don't think it was a, an oversight, but I don't know. The, the language of that, that appellate decision. Now, I didn't have the full decision. Does anybody have the full decision? This is really a synopsis, is it not?
I have the full decision.
And do you, do you see any, any anomalies or discrepancies between the synopsis that, this two-page synopsis and the, and the whole decision?
And I don't think I saw the two-page synopsis.
No, okay. That was sent to us today, but it might have. Anyway. Well, Dave, why don't you opine, and we'll certainly hear from Cindy?
In the first, the first paragraph of that decision, says, "We consider here whether certain zoning laws, taken together with the derelict fee statute, allow a property owner to include land extending to the middle of an adjoining street when calculating lot area for the purposes of obtaining the status of buildable lot referred to in the bylaw as residential lot of record or grandfather status. We hold that it does not." I mean, my, I would like to hear from Cindy on this. My feeling is that had we had the Sears decision when we did 36 Oak Street, we would not have overridden the building inspectors to now the building permit. I think reading the, the Sears case that perhaps Mr. Sullivan is correct, that we are not required to consider the derelict fee area as part of the lot, but we're not required not to. And then we have the discretion to do one or the other. So I think if that's true, we have the choice to either follow the precedent that we set in 2017, which may be wrong on the law. But we may have the discretion to be wrong. Or we can follow what is pretty clear, the appeals court's decision on this particular issue and harmonize our, our precedent with what the law seems to be. The advantage of doing that is it's also harmonious with our definition of lot in the, in the zoning bylaw. So I guess the question is, how do we want to weigh our priorities? Do we want to weigh them in favor of following the precedent that we've set in the past and that perhaps people have relied on? Or do we want to come down on the side of trying to harmonize our decisions with what the law appears to be?
David, I have a question. And I, I think that, that's a very good sort of delineation of the choices before us. Do you have a sense from, since you have the whole case or the whole decision rather than the two-page trot? Do you have a sense for, and maybe since you chose to read the language you chose to read, do you have a sense for if the shoe had been on the other foot and Marshfield had decided that that lot was buildable? Whether or not that court would have said, okay, well, they've got the right to interpret their law locally. Because it seems to me that the decision you wrote a couple of years ago on Oak Street was really well thought through, very well argued, and equitable. And if the zoning board in Marshfield had written your decision, do you think that there's a reading of their court's logic that would have said, well, they're not required to, but they're not required not to?
Well, reading the decision, their, their reasoning at arriving, at what they arrived at, basically saying you don't count that lot area.
You don't count or you can't count?
Well, says, "We cannot accept the plaintiff's construction of the derelict fee statute."
Okay.
Cannot.
Right. It makes little sense to read it as a grant of additional lot area for the purposes of meeting minimum lot size and zoning laws.
I, I think our decision of two years ago, two and a half years ago, was based on two cases given us by an attorney. And there was no, this, this particular case, Sears versus Marshfield, the appellate case, was never before us. These were two earlier cases that said you could count it. And had I read this at that time, my vote would have been to deny, not to, not to approve a building.
The next paragraph says, "The statute, the derelict fee statute, designed to deal with the enforcement of property rights and the problem of unowned lots, has never applied, nor did the legislature intend it to apply to add lot area for zoning purposes."
That's pretty clear.
Seems pretty, you know, pretty four corners. The, the hearing, that, the holding of the case does say that it doesn't require the Marshfield Board to include that lot area. So the holding is not clear, but their reasoning to get to that holding seems to be pretty clear. The other thing I wanted to, to just, this single lot exemption will apply to any of those lots up there unless they're owned in common with the adjoining lot.
Yeah.
Like the plan, the plans show, the 1901 plan shows an 8,000-foot square lot. The deed shows an 8,000-square-foot lot. The deed shows the lot line at the street, not at the middle of the street. So pretty much everything here is consistent with the lot being an 8,000-foot lot with a lot line.
Provided it's not owned in common with any of the abutters?
Thing that would change that is...
Wait a minute, Dave. Go back about 10 seconds.
You cut out.
Okay.
The deed shows the lot, the front lot line at the street. The plot plan filed in 1901 shows the plot line, lot line at the street. It shows an 8,000-square-foot lot. The only inconsistency with, with concluding that it's an 8,000-square-foot lot is that derelict fee statute, piece of land to the middle of Oak Street, an extra thousand feet. And if our accepting of that lot area to, for zoning purposes was incorrect in 2017, then it's still incorrect today. And I do think, I agree with Woody, if we had the Sears case in front of us in 2017, we would not have granted that special permit.
How about the fact that people have relied economically on what we decided?
I think that's a big concern. But I don't think, I think that this is the only instance in which people have relied on that economically. I think most of the people who have a lot, it's their side yard. And like, most people I doubt consider them to be, well, I don't know. I don't know what people
Yeah.
thought of them as. But they're 8,000-foot lots, requires a 9,000-foot lot. So you need some sort of essentially illegal fiction to get there.
I'm sure Town Council, I'd like to hear from Cindy, I'm sure Town Council has a, has a different point of view. Mine is that if we did make, if you will, a mistake or an error, I would say, because some information was not available to us. And I don't know how in that hearing we would have uncovered the Sears versus, well, we could have, as Matt did, but it was not presented to the board. That, yes, it's, there's precedents been set, but if it's flawed in error, you know, contrary to what the Appeals Court, second highest court in the Commonwealth, says, we're just inviting further, I think, litigation, and we're probably likely to lose. I'm guessing. But I don't know. Cindy, another point of view?
I, I, I guess, you know, to the extent you would be inviting litigation, I don't know that I think that's true if you were to vote in favor of allowing a house. I don't share the view that you would likely lose on that ground in light of everything. I think this decision was in place when you made your decision in 2017. Though the law has not changed, and no one challenged it then. And it is an appeals court decision, which is of some impact. But I sit here and I read this decision, and I view it as the court going out of its way, as it's done on numerous occasions, to give deference to the local board for the decision it came to on how it interpreted its own bylaw. And I think it, it states that repeatedly. You know, keeping in mind, reading, we defer to the ZBA's reasonable interpretation. They don't like to step on the toes if it's at all reasonable to come to the conclusion. We don't know exactly what that bylaw said at the time. And I think that, I think there may be dicta, but I think, I personally feel that if the Marshfield decision had gone the other way, this decision would have been couched differently. I think it's, I think what you have to rely on is the holding, and they make it very clear that the derelict fee statute doesn't require the, the town to make a decision different from the decision it made. And I think that is all this decision stands for, in my mind. And, you know, I could more than straight-faced argue a decision distinguishing this case from what's before this board. That being said, that's my view of this case. I don't think it's the be and end-all of your decision-making. I, it's not even a new case that came down when you made your other decision, and no one challenged your decision based on this then. And I, I think, I think the court went out of its way for the more sanctimonious proposition is if the zoning board, which we presume has some wisdom over its bylaws, over and above what we as an independent court do, takes this position, we are going to give deference unless they're clearly, you know, arbitrary, capricious, whimsical, no rational basis to what they're doing. And I don't think the court could say that here, but I think the court went out of its way not to say it can't be used, but you take that position. But it was very clear in saying, you're not required to take a contrary position. And then, you know, when I look at, you know, I may be going beyond what you've asked me to look at, but when I look at your language in your bylaw, and I look at the plan, I look at all of these plans, in every single one of them, back in 1901, and you look at this, this map, they're all under 9,000 square feet. You know, when you don't... When you don't take the land they owned under the roadway. And at that time, you owned, you know, that was what the common law was. So I think, I think the 9,000 only makes sense, given this plan and the way these lots are all weighed out. If you do assume that the zoning was crafted with the size of these lots, which are all pretty much the same, to all be buildable lots. I don't see anything that says, all of you that were built on this plan that's been recorded and it's been approved since 1901, you're okay. But these few lots in the same neighborhood and as part of the same plan, because we took the street and took property from you, you can't build. Well, I haven't, I have a problem with that. And then I look at your definition, the lot was lawfully laid out in a plan or deed recorded, and that seems to be the case here, right? And it was in 1901, which was before there was any zoning law with any requirement. And then the question I have is about the 9,000 square feet. Was, do we know whether this lot was in common ownership back then? When the zoning went into place? Excuse me. I think that contemplates ownership, not now, but at the time of enactment. And if it wasn't, then you don't even have to worry about the 9,000 square feet.
I'm not sure I'm following the last point. Why is common ownership in 1901 relevant?
On the effective date, when the bylaw went in. The effective date is either when the bylaw went in, which was after the plan, or the effective date of the plan. But at either date, do we know if that was in common ownership? Because you don't have to even worry about 9,000 square feet unless it was in common ownership.
So if it wasn't in common ownership, but it was...
Then your bylaw doesn't require you to look at, it says, "Was on the effective date held in ownership separate from that of adopting land, adjoining land?" It only had the 9,000 square feet if it was at that time owned in common. Excuse me. That's what it says?
Held, if it was not in common ownership with the next door.
Right.
You could certainly build on an 8,000-square-foot lot or anything else that was laid out and recorded.
That's the way it reads, and I would think the reasoning would be, and I don't know. But it might be that if you owned both of them at that time, you would have had the ability to meet the requirements with one of your lots. But if you didn't, you couldn't. But if you look at this plan, and that's, I mean, I just, you know, I think reasonable minds can disagree. If I have to be defending the town, I don't have a problem with the decision that the board has drafted or has issued before. And I just think, when you look at the plan that was approved and filed and the homes in the neighborhood and the taking not giving any compensation, and you look at all your bylaws and try to make sense of them at the time they were put into place and with this plan on record, I think, I think the decision that you made in 2017 is defensible, which is probably why it was not challenged. We've not seen a new decision that would change the law from what it was back then. And, you know, with all due respect to everyone in this room, I don't believe we're the only people capable of digging up a decision if we had to, if we really wanted to find a way to fight and knock that old decision down back then. And I think, it, I think the board has justification to support its previous decision, if that's what it wants to do.
so if the lot was according to B, 8.3B, the lot was lawfully laid out and a deed recorded, which it is, 8,017 square feet, that's part one. Part two, it wasn't, well, it was in conformity with zoning bylaw because it didn't exist.
Right, so it conformed.
So it had to have conformed. And then if it was held in ownership separate from that of adjoining land or, but the effective date is when the dimensional requirements came in, isn't that right? Wouldn't you say?
The first sentence in part B is, "Such lot on or before the effective date of the requirements in question," which is the zoning bylaw. And then below it says, "Was on that effective date held in ownership separate or if in common ownership had 9,000 square feet."
Do we know at what point it became owned in common, had common ownership?
I don't know, we only have two deeds and there was common ownership in both of those. I mean, Mrs. Brennick, like, someone said she was there for 95 years, so.
So it was held in common ownership?
I don't know that we can say that definitively. And we also struggle with why, I'm trying to read my contact, they're driving me nuts, I apologize.
Like, I do think that if it was held in separate ownership when the zoning bylaw was passed, that council would have told us that.
Yeah.
Because they could have just built as of right then.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know, and I'm not...
That's a good supposition. Why would you, why would you need to or want to go through an application to the zoning board if you can do it by right? I mean...
Well, if the building inspector denied, so they had to come.
But the building inspector would not have denied if 8.3 was effective.
Presumably.
I'm going to say, I'm not going to engage in what-ifs on the part of anyone and why they did or didn't do something. I've just seen too many what-ifs that seem like they're the only possible reason that something could have been done a certain way be proven completely wrong down the road. So I don't think it's helpful to go down that path in coming to your decision. But that's my opinion, and it's only my opinion, so.
Why would they have gone through, so, why would they have used the language they did though in 8.3B? One, that the lot, or lots, were lawfully laid out in a plan or deed duly recorded in the registry of deeds. And the lots, as recorded, are 8,000. Then they go on to say you have to have 9,000. Why would they have done that?
I think when you go back with what was commonly thought of, when those are all private ways, is you owned, and all of those were over 9,000 square feet when you include that. Every one of them.
Then I would have used other language rather than saying was a deed duly recorded. The deed is duly, there is a deed on each of these duly recorded, and it's 8,000 square feet.
I think the intent was to preserve this plan and not to allow any smaller configurations to be made from this. That's, that's the only thing I can see is, this plan clearly shows an entire area with relatively identically sized lots, and all having single-family homes. And, you know, nothing is perfect. Could language have been better? Yes. Could the appeals court decision have stated things differently? Yes. But I think it's clear that they start off by saying, when you look at the zoning bylaws and the derelict fee statute and look at them together and the way the board is interpreting it, and then when you look at their conclusion saying, this isn't unreasonable, we're not going to mess with their decision. I think that's the takeaway from the case. So I think, I think the point of the Sears case was...
So the language in 8.3 is not correct, is incorrect. The drafters of 8.3 used sloppy language by saying it had to be a deed duly recorded. They shouldn't have said that.
Well, I'm not sure what exactly they should or shouldn't have said, but you do have this recorded and you do have this plan recorded. I don't know, I mean, we can't get into their minds, but it does seem to me that when they put this in place, their intent was to preserve plans that had already been approved and recorded, that already had set out lots.
Well, if they're giving an exemption, if you will, if the land is in single ownership, but if you own two, wouldn't the doctrine of merger or something come into effect here? I mean, I don't think this is just slapdash language. I think this was probably very precise. I mean, one of the drafters, Dan Cotton, was as smart a guy as any of us will ever meet in our lifetimes. And he was a county, basically. He happened to have gone to a very good college in New Hampshire, by the way, but other than, so he wasn't just off the turnip truck, but they used, they had rather specific language here. It had to be a deed recorded, it was. By right, if it's separate ownership, but if it was common ownership, you had to have 9,000 square feet.
I think that there is room to interpret it, and I think the board can make a decision, and I think that decision can be supported whichever way it does.
Yeah, I know.
Reasoning going both ways. I don't think this is, unfortunately for me, this isn't one of those situations where I can say, you cannot possibly go down this path because that would just, there's no rationale for that.
Right.
So, yeah, I wish it was more one-sided, it would make my job easier. On the other hand, what you do decide to do, I think, can be defended either way. I mean, I also, I mean, I know, Woody, we talked briefly about the 8.3C.
I don't think that applies, the more, I talked to Dave today, there was no Cohasset Planning Board then. So there was not a subdivision plan approved by the Cohasset Planning Board. And I think that was meant to be something that's much more modern than a 1901 plan. Or they wouldn't have, or they needn't, they could have said duly approved or something.
It's a question in my mind, I mean, so nobody approved this plan? It was just set up and recorded?
And recorded in 1901.
In 1901, that's what happened.
Okay.
I mean, this is all, this is, I mean, Cohasset, you know, was a farming community. It wasn't, other than the road along the coast.
The problem with this situation, as in a lot of situations in Long Island, is a lot of the information is really old and doesn't fit neatly into what we would put in now. And so there's a lot of room to try to figure out what was in people's minds and what was the intent. And I wish I could sit here and tell you definitively, I feel that your decision in 2017 was wrong, but I can't. But that's why...
If I can't get, I've talked enough. Even if I can't get into their mind, I was just taking the literal language, both in the definition of lot, as well as a lot that was lawfully laid out and recorded in the lot. All we have is what was recorded at 8,001 seven square feet.
And I think...
I don't think, there wasn't any derelict fee statute to speak of back at the turn of the last century. I mean, I think there was some railroad issues, but even they emerged...
We're all of the common law and it just actually made it clearer. But I mean, I think this is a lawfully recorded plan. You know, I can defend whatever position the board takes.
And I can, I mean, I think what's important is that the board, if we can't get consensus, I'd at least go with a majority. However, I don't feel that...
You don't, no, we have to be unanimous.
That's right.
And I don't, I don't think that you can underestimate the equities that you're faced with, you know? I think, I think a decision was made by the board in 2017. That decision was not challenged. There is no new law that has come out since. And even if it had come out since, it would necessarily change the fact that your position then was okay. And you have a situation where I think the equities are such that if someone is going to be faced with an unbuildable lot, that there will definitely, that would be, that was not intended by the taking. So you have a lot of issue for you to sort through, but I think however you conclude, I think...
Dave is shaping, Dave.
Yeah, I don't think the taking is, taking is only relevant if we add in the derelict fee area. That's the question that we have to get past. Because there, there's no question that all these lots are buildable if they're in single ownership. It's only if they're in ownership in common that the 9,000-square-foot rule applies.
Meaning if they're ownership in common, the lots in question for us, you know, up and down the street, were not built, could only have one house. You couldn't, you couldn't build two houses on a lot that's less than 9,000 square feet.
Right.
If it's in common ownership.
Basically, I think it is a doctrine of merger because it's an 18,000-square-foot minimum lot size in that zone.
No, it was still undersized, but not by a lot. I mean, what's the RA, 24,000 square feet or something? I mean, it was, what?
18.
Oh, so it made it a legal lot.
No, because it would have been 16, but...
Yeah. My math isn't very good, okay, other than that.
The idea of the merger is to get the lot closer to conforming.
Yeah. It would have been within basically 10 or 12% of legal size. Pretty close. And maybe that was an intent, I mean, who knows? I'm, well, I've talked. Dave, has your mind been changed? And if not, Peter, has your mind been changed, or Matt?
And I guess what, for clarification, you said we need unanimous, more or less?
Well, we need three votes.
Three voting parties.
Yeah, and I think because Dave did the other decision, I think he's got to be the third vote. Peter and I automatically...
I was not present for the other decision. I only read it subsequent and thought to myself, oh, I'm very persuaded.
Yeah, that's because Dave is very articulate.
Well, for sure. But I think he had a lot of good reasoning in his decision. And I think that it only gets harder when you're reversing a precedent that people relied on to make business decisions. I think you better be really sure that you can't read it, that it's a question of the board having the right to decide it one way or the other, and we decided it. And we decided it very intelligently. And we decided it very intelligently. I'm not sure, I, I mean, if I'd been voting in Marshfield, I might have voted the other way and voted for the, uh, buildability of the lot there too, because I do believe that the arguments that David raised were good ones. Now, I'm not the appeals court, but I think the appeals court upheld Marshfield more than it, um, didn't like the facts. And if, if, I mean, I don't have to vote on this one, um, if you want.
You're the vice chair, well, you were here at our last month, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're up to speed. I don't think.
Well, I, I, I've heard all of the sessions on this one. I've been here. I, I think I like David's argument better than the appeals court's argument. And I'm not an attorney, so.
I mean, David's.
I get, I get the, I get David's former argument, not this one.
Even though he's.
Even though he may be, he may be, may be reversing himself, but, um, I still like it.
And the problem is, I mean, we could go on, I mean, I don't want to be unnecessarily hasty, but we have two weeks to render a decision, file a decision.
I think we need to make it, render, render a decision. I mean, what is it, what's going, what's going to change after tonight?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm leading up to. I mean, I think, but Matt, where are you? Even though you may not be a voting member, you're a member.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still of the opinion, I think that, um, that I, um, don't think that it should be, you know, that, in other words, I, I stand with the building inspectors' decision to have denied the permit this time. Is my opinion.
It's interesting that he went off on his own to do that, um, in the face of a decision that was, uh, definitive, well argued, and never challenged. Um, not sure, not sure why he did, because I don't think he was off reading the Sears case.
Well, and we do say never challenged now, what, the, the decision was never legally challenged, but I do know that, um, shortly after our decision was made, um, there was a lot of, um, people that, and it came up at some of our meetings afterwards, even people had contacted like Jen and others to more or less, uh, object to the decision based on their living close to, um, some of these other lots on the road.
Well, that's because that's nimbyism.
Yeah, so there was some letters, you know, and stuff like that sent to the town. But not, but to your point, the decision itself on the Rosebach property was never challenged.
We wouldn't be here if Bob went freelancing.
Well, that doesn't surprise you, does it?
No. But it also doesn't, um, you know, I, I, I have no idea why he did that.
I mean, I read, yeah, I went back today and I did read his, um, I guess, rationale for denying it, and it's, you know, it's not in sync with, you know, this, this particular decision that, that we're hanging our hat on, um, the Marshfield decision, um.
He actually went out, he actually went out and researched the Marshfield decision and hung his decision on that?
Well, he didn't, he didn't, he hung it more on the I looked at it earlier today, I think it had to do with like the easements that were, um.
Taken or whatever.
Yeah. Um, Jen, you might have it handy, but I.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can, I can say that the Rosebach decision became because he denied the building permit in that case.
Yeah.
And, um, and, and he, and he always had, had concerns about it. But, you know, it's not, he's not going to appeal the board's decision, so when somebody came and filed for a permit, there had been enough, and we had constant traffic about, from people from that area concerned about the area being built out. Just to let you know, coming into the office, asking questions. And, um, so he did want to set it back here just for the board to hear it, because he didn't want to, he didn't want to issue a building permit and make a mistake if the board would think otherwise. So.
Well. A split vote is a denial.
A denial of the appeal.
Yes. But the, and that's also though messy. I, I.
So, so wait a minute now, just a second, so, uh, the owner of the land is denying the building inspectors, uh, sorry, is appealing the building inspector's decision.
Denial. Yeah.
And they, appealing the denial. And if we split, uh, two to one, and I'm the one, uh, you are, uh, upholding the building inspector, correct?
Right.
All right.
That's correct.
If we split, if we split two to one, you know, two saying, go along with the building, or two say override the building inspector, and one saying no, the answer is no.
Right, but that's not where I think we are.
If there were two, um, agreeing with the building inspector, and, uh, in that case, you know, David, perhaps you and I, um, and Pete were, were to be the no vote, it's still a, you know, a denial of a building permit.
No, it isn't.
I, I, I'm sorry, yeah, it is.
No, it isn't. I think you're, you're not, you're double negativating. If, if it takes, if it takes two to override.
It takes three.
It takes three. You have to be unanimous. Otherwise, the appeal is, is denied. Meaning the building inspector's decision is upheld.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And it takes three, it, it would, it would, let, let's work, let's work this one more time. So, the building inspector's decision has been appealed by the owner of the property. If we vote to uphold the building inspector by a two to one, uh, margin, the building inspector's decision is upheld, correct?
Mm-hmm, right.
All right, so if I, if I vote against, if I vote to, um, uh, overturn the decision, but the two of you vote, uh, in favor of it, then the building inspector's decision stands.
Correct.
Anytime there's a split vote, the building inspector's decision stands. It could be two to one or one to two.
Okay.
That's.
So even if David, David had a different, you know.
So even if David.
If David, if Peter agreed, in other words.
And if David and I agree and you disagree, Woody, the building inspector's decision stands.
Right.
If you and Da, if you and David, if you and David agree, and I disagree, the building inspector's decision stands.
Right.
So it takes unanimity, I mean, this is my understanding of it, takes unanimity to deny. I'm sorry, to, 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 to.
Uphold an appeal.
Yes. And at the moment, it sounds like it's one to two.
Well, we gotta vote.
Yeah, right. Cindy, what are the reverberations of potential issues? I mean, do you ever run into a zoning board that splits on an appeal? Oh, wait a minute, sorry, you're muted.
I think it's in chapter forty.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not quite sure I understand your question about having a split decision. If you have a split decision, you have a split decision. Uh, you know. It, what really are you asking me? I'm not quite sure I get your understanding.
I'm not even sure.
And I don't want to be answering questions I'm not asked.
I know, I know, no.
If you ask me the implications of a split decision, however opposed, I think that says that there is more room for, um, someone to argue that the other side was perhaps right. Um, I, I think, you know, I think bottom line it comes down to, what are the odds of, I mean, I think the only implications are how they impact really an appeal.
By decision, whatever it may be.
You know, whatever the way the decision goes.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
You know, you know the.
You know, there's a lot of good decisions in, in Supreme Court all the way down that are not unanimous, for one reason or another, so I, I don't, I don't think that, um, that should really sway your vote unless you, I mean, I think the bottom line is you have to decide how you want to come down. And however many of you go one way, go one way. I don't know how else I can really answer your question.
What you've done is, you've done it, I think. David, what do you think?
In terms of that?
No, I mean, we have, we have to move on. I think we have to make a decision.
Yeah, I think so too. We need a motion.
You could make a motion.
Um, I move that the appeal of the building inspector's decision, um, be approved. I mean, I think that's the right motion, and then you vote yes or no, right?
Oh, I see, okay. Got it, got it. Well, I'm happy to second it. I could, I guess, yes, why, why play games? I'll second that.
Wait a minute, so you're, you want to.
I'm just making the motion.
And then you're second.
All I'm doing is making the motion, so we have a clear question in front of us.
Got it, got it, okay.
And I just.
I think it would have been clearer if you'd, if you'd made it the other way, but beside the point.
Cindy.
So my understanding, so you all are clear on this, that if you vote affirmatively, you are granting the relief requested.
Yeah, the reason that I worded it that way.
The way, I'm just making sure everyone can say it when they vote.
The reason I worded it that way is because the vote has to be three to zero for the mo, for that motion to pass.
And, and it's a positive motion. I, I think, I think it's the motion to make. I agree with you.
Okay, so, um, in favor of that motion? David?
Nay.
Woody, nay. Peter?
I'm, I am in favor of that motion.
Okay, so it's two nays and one aye.
Yes.
Okay. I'll write it up and get it out.
Okay. Let's, let's move quickly if we can, I think we can, on the other couple of things in front of us, um, one of which is the eleven Sheldon Road. I did a draft. And I basically came out on the draft saying, I thought it was equivocating too much to call this a combination, uh, guesthouse, rec room. Um, basically, there's no definition of rec room anywhere in the bylaw. It's not an accessory um, building by any means. Um, rec rooms are usually part of a, of a main house, as, uh, somebody's letter indicated, as is a kitchen. And so my decision is, and we're not allowed to, um, uh, grant relief, a variance on a use that's not, um, otherwise permitted in the district. And recreation room is not mentioned, and if it's not mentioned, it's not permitted. And so we can't approve a rec room, but we can approve a guesthouse. Which I think would, um, you know, saw, there, there is a definition of guesthouse, we know what it is. And they, they're perfectly welcome to, um, put in a wet bar or, you know, sound system, whatever they want to do with, with a guesthouse. Because it'll be for family and friends, not for remuneration. And that's basically where I came out. I was just uneasy about approving a rec room where there's absolutely no definition or reference to it. Peter?
Woody, may I say that I like this decision just as much as I like David's original decision on the last one? And I would wholeheartedly, uh, vote to, uh, approve this decision, pretty much as argued. I might have a few edits, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
From a net, net, net standpoint, but, but in, in terms of, uh, figuring out something that I thought was very intractable when it first came before us, I, I think it's great. It's a great solution. And it also, I think, um, it, um, and, and this is not why I'm, I, I like it so much. I think it actually satisfies almost everybody who came before us on this.
Everybody who is concerned or objecting, a, as well as the people like Lee Schwartz who wanted to, you know, have a converted.
I, I, for a while, I thought the only reason that she was doing this was to, uh, deal with a sewer problem. But we had testimony tonight that that wasn't a problem, that she has the connectivity because she's given up a bedroom, so.
Yeah.
Nobody loses in this decision. It's the right decision, and the neighbors who were, uh, concerned about uh, other more intense uses know exactly what a guesthouse is, so.
Yeah, and when they, and when they've brought up another, a second residence on this property, I think that's a red herring, because you can't, as we all know, you can't have two dwellings on a single lot, and, uh, it would, for sure, I mean, they can apply for a variance, but, you know, that'd be just a waste of effort.
I think that the concerns that people had are, are, um, satisfied by the restrictions that our bylaws have for a guesthouse. So by doing it as a guesthouse, I think it addresses everything everybody needs. And they can recreate the guesthouse where they want.
Yeah, I thought it was worth twice in the decision to mention what a guesthouse is, just in case there's any can, claim to confusion. Um, any, anybody have, have an, anybody uneasy about my draft decision? I do want to make a couple of edits and receive your edits.
I thought it was a good one myself. Nice job. I don't have, um, any issues with it.
Okay.
Uh, I agree with the decision, but and, and both of them, uh, should note that I wasn't present for, uh, all of the meetings.
Ah, okay, okay.
And two, on the, uh, Sheldon Road, I think the present draft specifically says that the, uh, 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 bathroom has been installed, or there's, uh, sewer, sewage has been, uh, installed. And it turns out it hadn't been installed.
Okay.
Yep, it does say that.
Not yet installed. Okay, I missed that. Until tonight, yeah. Good. All right, well, the, uh, office will be open for further edits if, uh, you'd like to make them, but I'll tackle what I know about tomorrow and we have.
I, I have about six or seven. They're all minor. They're not worth discussing tonight. Um, and, uh, I would like to move that we accept Woody's decision, uh, as he may, uh, edit it slightly further, um, and, um, and proceed.
I'll second that motion.
They moved and seconded it. All in favor. Woody, you're the guy.
Lee, darts.
Lee darts. Charlie, Matt?
Peter.
Matt walked.
Everybody's aye.
Okay, we're all aye. The third one, I'm recused. Peter, turning it over to you. It's Lee's decision. She drafted one on seventy five Pleasant Street.
May I just interject and, um, just let, um, let Cindy, let Cindy go?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Cindy.
Cindy, wait a minute, aren't you at home? You have nowhere to go, you're already.
I think I've done enough damage for one night.
I know.
Thank you, Cindy.
I thought, I thought you were very helpful on that last one.
Yeah, really.
Good luck, and I'm sure I'll see you soon. Thank you, Cindy.
Bad news.
Good night. Um, so, uh, Lee, um, would you care to just summarize? I think it's pretty straightforward, but, uh, and then, and personally, I fully agree with the conclusion, and I have even fewer edits than I did on Woody's, but, but what, what was your thought process?
Well, um, the thought process, there was no, uh, it's a a second floor going directly over the first floor, as was stressed during the presentation. It's just vertical. Uh, the only additional square footage is the sixty eight, um, square feet for vestibule. square feet for vestibule, which is not in the setback. The the closest abutter, which is right on the other side of their driveway, sent a letter in support of the second floor and said that it will actually make the, you know, be more in line with the neighborhood than the small ranch. Most of the houses are two story. The other abutter, as I stated in there, he had made comments about the integrity of the wall. There was no issues brought up about the construction damaging the wall. Matt had made a comment about the drainage, but that was addressed, saying that that wasn't going to be an issue. So therefore, I just, I said that the board would approve the special permit so that the applicants can add the additional second floor. And also, the third floor is only going to be for storage. It's not high enough to have any living space besides being used for storage.
Great. Any any questions? How about a motion to approve the the opinion?
It's all moved.
A second?
Actually, I just have one question on, just when you mentioned that, Leah. I am in agreement totally with the decision. But when we have the ones that have the restriction in the attic, as far as height, do we have to include that as a condition, Peter, or is that just something to reference, like like Lee did within the seven, pulling up the decision now?
Well, it it fits with the vision that it be built in conjunction. Construction will and use will conform to the plans submitted. We could be more specific if we chose. But the plans that were submitted, as I recall, showed the very low seal, very low height up in the third floor.
Okay, yeah, however, we consistently.
Yeah.
I think there's only, I think they said there was only a few feet that somebody could stand up, and the rest of it was going to be under eaves.
Yeah.
That's in the plan. And the and they it's, it is in here that the roof height will only be twenty eight point three feet as opposed to the limit, which would be thirty five feet. So it it says it's seven feet lower than what it what it could be.
Okay, yeah, sorry to interrupt. I can second it if that's where we're at.
Okay, good. It's been moved and seconded. We'll move to a vote. Which I guess is, now, Charlie, you weren't here for this one?
No.
Okay, then we should have Lee be the third votes. She wrote the opinion. But let's get everybody on on the table, but I guess the voting members are probably David, me, and you, Lee.
Okay.
Because Woody's recused. All those in favor?
Aye, Lee Darst.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Charlie's not voting. Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Peter Gerdick, aye. So back to you, Woody.
Thanks. We have just kind of a two part, and I'll try to make it quick. The condominium proposal at the end of the harbor is has been before the planning board, and they're working their way through some issues and asked if the zoning, if there were zoning issues over and above the the application that keeps getting postponed about about wetlands. And yeah, I did a rather extensive memo, which you are welcome to look at and comment on and amplify. But the memo is for basically our own purposes when it comes to us, as well as the planning board. And I know that you really haven't had a chance to look at the plans or or absorb my memo. So take your time, but the planning board is going to meet in a week to go over a couple of things that really have to do with how people assign parking spaces and things. I think there's a real parking situation here. Everything is solvable, I suppose. But there is that, so I would like your points of view. Because I think it's only fair that the applicant understand what some of our concerns may be, and if they can solve, resolve those before coming to the zoning board, all the better. I mean, it's not a
Did Woody, did we get your memo?
Well, I think, but it may have only gone out today. So I'm, it should have gone out earlier, but but I think it only went out today, so I'm not expecting anybody to have speed read it. And and so I'm just saying, take the week, the next week.
Yeah.
And 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 we have plans. They're all in flux, but you can understand what at least my concerns are, and there may be others with that. But I I think they have to resolve some of these before finally winding their way through. Secondly, there is the, there are a couple of master plans, a harbor master plan, but also a town master plan. And I'm a member of the zoning and land use working group, which is not by any means exclusive to the harbor, but is going to be dealing with harbor zoning, but also some other issues, such as getting rid of that nasty prohibition that we've lived with, that we can't give use variances ever. Kinds of things, and and to streamline some anomalies about about height and how you measure and oh, there's a whole litany of things. Those I'm are, we're going to deal with in six month chunks. I'm going to be talking to you people every month, and and we'll give you kind of status reports in advance of what we think are the real crunch points in in our zoning for the whole town, or what can we improve? And I think some of this is heading towards, my hope, but I don't know, is a is a broader definition of historic districts in town to give an historic district commission some some clout. There are issues of proportional zoning. I mean, I think we all recognize that a little house in Summer Street that's on a ten thousand square foot lot that goes up thirty five feet is a lot different than a house on a two acre lot that goes up thirty, you know, set back a hundred feet. And there may be some proportional zoning that we're going to work on. None of this has been decided. We have a pretty good group, but it's you know, really in the in the formative stage. So I will post you pretty much every month, and I'll try to do that in advance. But we're going to take this in chunks. And I think the harbor is probably month six to twelve. And there's a just a lot of things going on in the harbor, some private properties that will probably be coming up for sale, six different zoning districts ring themselves around the harbor. It's a strange setting down there, so that's in addition to whatever goes on with the condominiums. So what am I saying? I guess that's about it. That's just a posting.
As a point of fact, I may have gotten your memo, but I don't remember having received it. I did get the plans by clicking through Jen, as you suggested, to the planning board site on the on the town. And so I had a preliminary look at those, but I would love to go back with your work in hand, Woody, and then think about it.
Okay.
So I did forward Woody's notes, and I'll just make sure that you got them. The planning board just asking for comments by the fifteenth of October. Tomorrow night is our next meeting. I think it'll mostly be a presentation because our peer reviewers just got their comments in for the planning board. But so the meeting would be worth listening to if you wanted to see the new plans.
Jen, send me a link at any rate.
Yeah, I sent everybody one.
Okay, okay.
Is the link you sent to the meeting so we can watch it, or is the link to the plans?
So the link is to the plans, and then the meeting agenda is is posted, and you can go through there.
And you can see it publicly?
Yep, you can see the meeting publicly. Yes, we'll be, it will be on.
Is it is it seven thirty tomorrow, or?
No, we meet at six thirty. We have a large home review before then.
You have a large home review first?
Yes.
How long do you forecast the large home review will last?
I imagine it'll be at least an hour.
Oh, so about seven thirty, if we tune in, we might see the harbor?
You might, you might. You're welcome to email me during the meeting, and I can let you know how it's going.
At the last, you need to be as harassed by us twice in twice in two nights.
Yeah, one of the things that I think, without getting into any detail, is really problematic about the entire harbor and waterfront is a lack of parking. That shouldn't surprise anybody. But there are some ambitious plans over and above the motel, or not the motel, the condos. And parking is really, at this point, not available. I think it can be made available. I think the other issue we have to think about longer term is that there are some rather large private properties that probably won't, will, that will come on the market. The Bellar Mine is a very good example. Norbert Herman hasn't sold his. At some point, the Oaks is probably going to change hands. The Lobster Pound has changed hands. And anyway, there's a lot of foot and issues of planning and and parking are yet to be dealt with. But if you've got thoughts, just keep them percolating, and as I post you on our work work group, I'll need input.
Do you know the size of some of these parcels, Woody? Have you looked them up?
The Bellar Mine has got about, I think, eight and a half acres, of which seven is upland. And they've got about six hundred and fifty or seven hundred feet of shoreline. And the Oaks, of course, has, I don't know, Jen, what it has, but it has like ten or something acres and even more shoreline.
It's really big. I can look that up online.
But it's over half the harbor. I mean, two thirds of the harbor is privately owned by people who are either in the process of selling or will be or will at some point in the next couple of years probably sell.
Well, the Oaks just sold.
Yeah, I know, but the guy's in his mid eighties. He uses it two two times a year, Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Okay.
And and at some point, I'm sure his days his days are numbered, and I can't imagine his kids are don't, you know, are going to want to own something like that. But
Is the Bell, what kind of frontage on this on a street does the Bellar Mine have?
Oh, Lord, it's got, it's got some sort of almost a cart path that goes that's technically a private way. But I don't know if it's even used by the public. I don't know, but anyway, there's a lot of land. The fear is, let's not become situate with, you know, condos, you know. You can imagine what condos would look like on top of the Bellar Mine cliff up there, hillside. I mean, it would be.
Yes.
Anyway, a lot of interesting stuff, but the first job is going to be to correct some anomalies and inconsistencies in the zoning bylaws. So if you've got your favorites, as Charlie does and others, make sure I refresh my memory. Because I'd like to put that, put all those in the table. I think the idea is that we will you know, come into town meeting with a sort of a comprehensive overhaul, not all zoning, but just a bunch of fixes.
By the way, do we know what the status is of the snack bar appeal at Sandy Beach?
I have, Jen, do you know?
Sorry, I will.
Association.
I know that they discussed it in executive session, which I'm not supposed to have privy to, so let me let me see if there's any sort of updates, but I know I know there was a discussion last month, so I will follow up.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. I'd forgotten about that.
That that might be a zoning change we want to look at again, too.
Yeah, well, I think the definition of fast food restaurant needs needs improving.
Yes, definitely. We were going to do that, I thought.
Yeah, and I've got a file that I've kept. I'm not sure how complete it is of of exactly, you know, thoughts like that. And so I will be preparing that and submitting it to the work group and see.
Right, we're going to be revisiting all of the items that we tabled because of COVID for town meeting, which were those. We had a couple that had had the public hearing. We're going to have to restart them all because we had to close them all because of COVID, so we want to bring some of those back as well.
Okay, not to be, not not to, not to be a crybaby, but I I am still in the office, and I haven't had anything to eat.
No, 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 I think.
And if if we could get get to closure here, I'd be ready to go home. I don't know if I'm going to eat.
The hearing, we haven't assigned the Roger Hoyt thing, but one, somebody owes a decision, and we can make that assignment next time, next go around, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Would you want to pick it just because, I mean, if he submits everything, you're going to hold them off for another month?
Oh, yeah. Okay, who wants to do, who who owes a decision? Hasn't done one recently.
I think I do.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay, let's give it to Charlie.
All right, and did we have any other ones? We closed thirty five, eleven. That's it, right?
That's it.
Okay, I had to leave, I had to abandon my bedroom because.
No, no, so so we're all, we're all we're basically, you know, we had three decisions tonight, one we've assigned, and and the harbor thing is goes on and on and on.
Yep.
Well, and it probably should, because it's very important.
Yeah.
So, all right. I I'll second your motion.
Okay, move and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.